Thank you. That's okay, I'll hold it up here. Yeah, it's all good.
Yeah, it could be, but you don't necessarily. Those are emails you can once do.
Anybody else that needs to sign up to speak?
Kelly, I think we're coming on air.
Yes, sir.
Because the glare on the clock, but I think it is. And it's slow anyway. It's fast. Should have had you tell a joke or something.
I do have one I can tell.
Good evening, Washington Courthouse, it is seven thirty P M. on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, time for our second regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mrs. Call will give the invocation and Mr. Johnson will lead us in the pledge and if you're able, please stand.
Dear Lord, we gather before you today with hearts full of gratitude for all of the positive things happening within our community and all of those hearts who are bent on helping members of our community. We ask for your guidance as we work on city council to improve the lives of those around us. And we continue to be grateful for your guidance in Jesus' name, amen.
My pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sylvia and Caleb.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have the minutes from our meeting on October ninth, twenty-twenty-four. Did anybody see any changes or things we needed to do to those? If not, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes as printed.
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
Before I leave council, we need to have a communication at some point. We never have any communication.
Frank can have Arthur write another letter. He's got some more street signs.
Anyway, we have service safety and recreation report from that committee and it's pretty pink, Mr. Hawk, you're up.
I'm getting back to it.
Okay. Before I start, I, uh, I got some new parts put in my mouth tonight, today.
Parts.
And so if it sounds like a T H, it probably is an S, so.
Excuse me, what did you say?
I said.
Go ahead, we got it.
A little bit of a lift.
Where'd you have the parts made at, in Germany?
Go ahead, Mr. Hawk.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, October ninth, twenty-twenty-four at six P M. Ted Hawk presided and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Gary Dean, service director, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Mark Pittthick, city attorney, Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a report by the fire department. The administration noted the recent burn ban. Number two, Chief Downing advised the committee of the upcoming open house. Number three, the administration noted that trunk or treat would be held on October nineteenth from six P M. to eight P M. Number four, the committee benefited from a report by the police department. The committee noted that Mr. Nick Wilson had been hired for the open police patrol position. Number five, Chief Fenary noted that the dispatch area modernization project was almost complete. Number six, Mr. Denon reviewed the status of the surveys currently received. The committee discussed fireworks concerns and different op- options. The committee recommended that the administration devise options for review. Number seven, the administration advised the committee that a residential survey near five points had been completed concerning nuisance issues. The committee noted that discussions regarding the area would continue with ODOT regarding possible changes in speed requirements for the area. Number eight, the committee benefited from a report on the status of various service projects within the community. The administration noted that brush chipping continued. Number nine, the administration noted that full depth repair work is close to completion on Market Street. Number ten, the committee noted that water services continued to be completed on Andrick Drive. Number ten, the committee benefited from a review of the Red Mile Boulevard survey regarding parking restrictions. Number twelve, the administration advised the committee that employees had been attending continuing education classes to receive the required water training contact hours. Number thirteen, the administration reported the status of the water supply. Mr. Denon advised that the water status was stable, but a hundred and twenty-two day notice would be needed if there is no precipitation likely in late December. Number fourteen, the committee noted that the administration was funded for the grant for improved traffic signals. The administration advised that work would begin in fiscal twenty-twenty-eight. Fifteen, the administration noted two positions were needed to be filled on the Metropolitan Ha- Metropolitan Housing Authority. Number sixteen, the committee discussed complaints from citizens regarding trash truck services hauling unsecured debris. Number seventeen, the administration advised the committee that construction work was completed at the Pickle Bowl Court at Gardner Park. Number eighteen, the committee recommended that leg- legislation be brought to council regarding downtown signage. Number nineteen, several roundabouts were discussed, but the city manager.
Not funny, now he's getting carried away.
Disregard that last.
Disregard that.
Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawk, chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
I've lost control. That was a lot to read, Mr. Hawk.
That was quite a bit.
Kelly owes you a White Castle or something. Anybody have any questions about that? Somebody want to make a motion to accept it, the report?
I'll make a motion to accept it, red.
I'll second that with the subtraction of the roundabout.
Well, it's not even in there, so.
Okay, roll call, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, Call and Hawk, so. Mr. Denon, it is time for your report, sir.
Thank you. Oh, small practical issue with the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, usually you move the second council meeting in November to Monday, the twenty-fifth at seven thirty. Is that what you folks want to do?
Yep.
Then somebody needs to make a motion, you need a second, you need a vote on.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. So what date would that be?
The twenty-fifth.
November twenty-fifth, Monday.
Monday.
Roll call, Kelly.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
The biggest item that I have talked about tonight, we spent a long evening with, with committee, so I'm not going to drag on. Um, it's incredibly dry out there. We don't really associate that with this time of year because the temperature's cooled down. You got a little bit of surface moisture, so the, the grass is greened up a little bit, but it is still incredibly dry. We've extensively and obsessively gone through the raw water reserve estimates. Unfortunately, we have to move up, reaching the one hundred and twenty day notification into early December. That's affected by things like evaporation, demand on the system. Now, that's not a point at which to, to panic. A hundred and twenty day notification simply needs that at that point in time, we calculate that you have a hundred and twenty days worth of raw water left. Honestly, for as dry as it's been, for as long as it has been, we've done enormously well. Uh, but it is best to be incredibly cautious. Uh, we'll begin an internal exercise about, uh, what we would do if we reach that point. Okay? And progressively, the, the longer you get into the, the hundred and twenty days, or the more you get into those hundred and twenty days, the more restrictive things would need to become. Uh, but that second reservoir that, that we built has made a tremendous difference in our ability to address these situations. We've invested in things like that additional well out there, which, which will help out. Uh, but it is just out of enormous caution that it's time to think about this in a little bit more depth so that what you do for the citizens is logical and keeps everybody safe in the community in a, a safe condition. So you'll see us start to do that and begin to have that, uh, planning exercise. But again, you wouldn't reach the hundred and twenty day notification until, uh, early December. Now, what's nice is that there's still a little bit of time between now and early December and hopefully, uh, you get some precipitation and that improves the situation. It's enormously better for us, honestly, if it rains a bit north of us in Madison County, uh, because you, you want that, you want the creek to flow. Now, once it begins to flow, uh, there might be a decision that we reached that will want it to flow for, uh, twelve or twenty-four hours before you begin to take water off of that, because after that water is set in there for a while, uh, that can be a problem. Uh, you get a, you collect a bunch of stuff you don't want in there. That heavy rain that we had, normally you would have had water in that creek, oh, lip and tipping full. Uh, we went over the dam for a very short period of time. And when I'm talking about going over the dam, the dam at the water plant. Cause that dam, uh, at the water plant down at the service department, its purpose is you slow down water in the creek so that you can pump it out of there. Uh, you'll remember that we dredged that area out, uh, last year or earlier than this year, I can't remember. Uh, so that, uh, that's easy to, to pump out of. Uh, cause what happens is that when you slow that water down with, with the dam on Paint Creek, you tend to drop a lot of silt there, so periodically, every couple of years, you gotta dredge that out of there. Uh, but this is something that service will be keeping an eye on, will do it all together. And it's nothing to get panicked about, but it's something that, you know, it's time to, to pay very close attention to it and make logical decisions. So that is something that you'll increasingly hear about. Uh, would like to thank the fire department for their open house, it's a very nice thing for young people in the community. Uh, the thirty-first is beggars night in Washington courthouse between the hours of six and eight, which means that when you're out and about that night, you need to slow down. Uh, because not every little kid, uh, wears a costume that's easy to see in the evening light. So you need to slow down a little bit and the folks going out to trick or treat with their kids, you need to be respectful of people's property. Uh, you know, don't do things like park in their yard, cause they get awfully wound up about that. Uh, but again, it's a fun night in Washington courthouse and you just want to keep everybody safe and everybody happy so that we enjoy the evening and you get to see a lot of nice little kids out there. That brings us to arguably the most important part of the evening. Uh, we have a lot of guests with us and we have the opportunity to recognize an exceptional, uh, citizen in Washington courthouse, somebody that has truly given of themselves. And this is the part where the program belongs to Mr. Lynch.
You know, some things are fun to do and some things cause me to be emotional, so fun things can be emotional too. So keep that in mind as I try to do this. Cause I gotta read this and I'm not sure Janet, I can get through this.
I, I'm sure you can.
And so everybody knows, we're going to give chances for pictures when this is done. Anyway, we like to recognize people in the community that do special things. And a lot of times it's one page of the proclamation. This is two pages and it could have been eight pages. So let me read this with my hand. Uh, this is proclamation of the City of Washington courthouse, Mrs. Janet Beck. There's a lot of whereas's here. Whereas Mrs. Janet Beck is a valued member of our community with a history of personal commitment to the advancement of the people of Washington courthouse in Fayette County. And whereas Mrs. Janet Beck was born to a family of five siblings on a humble farm in Adams County, Ohio, learning from her parents the value of work and service to others. And whereas Mrs. Janet Beck made a home, raised a family with Jim, her husband, of fifty-three years, together believing that Jesus taught it was better to serve than to serve. And whereas Mrs. Janet Beck, at age ninety-two, continues a life dedicated to people, caring for our last veteran of World War Two until his death, preparing his meals, assisting with his transportation and household chores like mowing his lawn. And whereas Mrs. Janet Beck delivers emergency medications to those in need across several states and frequently drives people in need to their medical appointments. And whereas Mrs. Janet Beck cooking expertise is exceptional and is put to use recognizing teachers, local merchants, public employees, school events, and in support of numerous local causes. And whereas Mrs. Janet Beck uses her farming background, annually tending a large garden from which Mrs. Beck shares vegetables to people in need. And whereas Mrs. Janet Beck assists people in need with groceries, painting and repairing broken items. And whereas we desire to collectively express special thanks to Mrs. Beck, this is my favorite one, for her noodles. Now therefore, we, the city council of City of Washington courthouse, Mr. Dale Lynch, chairperson, Mr. Steve Schultz, vice chairperson, Mr. Jim Christman, member of council, Mr. Ted Hawk, member of council, Mr. Caleb Johnson, member of council, Mr. Jim Blair, member of council, and Mrs. Sylvia Call, member of council. And Mr. Judge J. Denon, city manager, the City of Washington courthouse, do hereby cause this proclamation to be so drafted. We urge the citizens of our community to thank Mrs. Janet Beck for her valued commitment to our lives. In witnessware of, here unto, Mr. Dale Lynch, chairperson, Mr. Judge J. Denon, city manager, and Mrs. Kelly Ford, clerk, have subscribed their names and caused the sale of the City of Washington courthouse to be affixed this twenty-third day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-four. And we even had to do it twice, cause I screwed up and signed it in the wrong place. But daily safety again. Janet?
I just can't believe.
You are something else, I hear.
I could say the same thing about you. He's the greatest Sunday school teacher I've sat under for a long time. And I really appreciate him, appreciate this. I didn't know, I did all those things.
Somebody did. Okay, I would like the family to come up here. Look at this great family. Yeah, and you know what? All of them served too. They've learned. Come up here, family, get around here. I just want a family picture first, then we'll get one with city council.
Shall we have them say noodles?
If you can't remember my name, just call me the noodle lady. The druggie. Or.
The tranny.
It's pharmaceuticals.
Yeah, we, we talk about her delivering or pushing drugs on the. It's for good things. Now Janet, if we could get a picture with the city council, it would be really good. Thank you for coming.
All right, council.
Come up here.
Save the positions.
Everybody get behind us. You deserve it. Make sure they can.
I don't know, I'm pretty sore. Do you want me to jump?
A bit on the other side of the table. Seriously.
All right, there you go.
Have you got everybody? Dale?
Yep, all right. There you go, now we got everybody. Okay, one, two, one, two, three. I'll move out of your way and you can take the spot because it's empty.
Okay, thank you. Count three, one, two, three. It doesn't flash and blink everybody. And I have to say, she and her family saved me at Scarecrow Festival because they made noodles and chicken and salad and everything for all the acts and did not have to worry about anything less than ours. They, it was amazing. They saved me inside, yes, that weekend.
She makes other things beside noodles.
Oh, the pies?
Noodle lady, the noodle lady.
Oh, my goodness.
Girls who makes the cinnamon rolls.
Really?
Cinnamon rolls, good.
Oh, man.
I made the comment that I was at the cross the creek, cross-country meet. And I said, in my career, I've probably been to, and I'm not exaggerating, thousands of athletic events. I've never been to one where they had beans and cornbread, chicken and noodles, homemade cinnamon rolls. That's a concession stand you want to go to. Anyway, Janet, yay. And by the way, you can stay or you can leave. It's up to you, uh, but thanks, thanks for coming, everybody, whole family.
Dale, before they leave, can I say?
Okay, wait a minute, Ted wants to say something, yes, sir.
Uh, years ago, when Jim and Janet bought that farm where they had the cross-country meat, there was a lot of foresight. We've been talking about being without water. Well, they had a creek without water and they had the cross creek, cross-country and the water filled, uh, the creek filled up with water. So maybe if they could have a cross-country meat about December, we'd be all right.
Have a north, have a north here. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a good evening.
Thank you.
See you. That's pretty good.
Uh, Joe, I did also notice, and we can do it next month, obviously. But, um, our second meeting in December is on Christmas night. And if we're here, Santa Claus won't be able to find us.
He won't find us.
So we might think about, we're gonna need to move that meeting too.
I can't believe it's coming that quick.
It's actually on Wednesday this year.
I can't believe November's rolling around that quickly.
Okay. For those who aren't here earlier, we get quite an extensive finance report during our finance committee meeting. But Mr. Sockman, if you want to summarize a few things, you're up.
Uh, well, this time of the year, we're setting good, you know, stable financially. Um, we're certainly looking at the last couple of months and cutting back in those areas where we can to kind of, you know, without cutting back on the operational ends that, that benefit the citizens, obviously. But, uh, overall, going into this fourth quarter, we're, we're good and, uh, working on the budget for twenty twenty-five, so. But, uh, like I said, we're in a pretty good spot right now.
That's good news.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
I have no report, Mr. Chair.
You're not mowing?
Oh, I'll still mow. Even though Sidra, we.
I know.
The rain that we got, big batch of grass growth.
They made it green again, at least, yes.
Okay, we have three, uh, citizens who would wish to speak this evening and the first one is Della. You know the routine, Della.
Been a while.
Been a while.
My name is Della Castrekey, I live at one three one one Farmington Lane, here in Washington courthouse. Um, I want to thank you all for letting me speak tonight. Um, I, I do want to say, um, Quail Run is happy that, that we have won and duplexes are going up and there's no apartments, so that, with that being said. But along with that, Quail Run and Trotters Point also has some questions. And so I'm hoping maybe you all can, um, clear some of them up for me tonight. Um, I don't have to ask all of them all at once either. Um, I am confused about, um, does the extension of Farmington Lane need to take place now that it's not apartments? I, I'm, that's one of my questions.
You can answer, Mr. Della.
Yes. Uh, Della, when you originally asked that question, I just hadn't been able to transition my mind from what I was doing when, when you asked. Uh, yes, you, you do. Uh, you need to resolve that now, the practical implications of that with the, the duplexes is probably, I would say, minimal. Uh, but I understand that's a concern that you have.
I, I just didn't know, understand that. And the other thing too, and, and maybe, and hopefully you should be able to clear this up for me too, cause I'm confused. What is the difference between a setback and a frontage? Because that terminology seems to be getting confused in conversations at the meetings. And so what is the difference?
Setback is the distance from, like, how far that the property has to, to set back from the street versus, uh, the frontage of the lot, which would be, oh, typically you're gonna measure that at the front of the lot at the, the public street and it's from one property marker to the other. Uh, you know, like, uh, oh, a lot in the older part of town, like down the street that our house sits on is, see, thirty-five, maybe forty feet. Uh, where a lot in a modern subdivision is gonna be typically a lot broader than that. Although you will see an increasing trend where, um, in new development, and this, not talking about Farmington Lane, but in other new developments that, that come down the pike, you'll see the density increase. But there'll be a trade-off of, like, you'll create some public green space park area, like, across the street. Or you'll build the houses around a little public park area, uh, that type of situation.
Um, is, um, it, it, so will Quail Run get letters and Trotters Point get letters when this starts or when the plans have been submitted for this new duplex development?
It's a lot, he'll have to submit, uh, a set of plans for that. And. And a lot of record mark, he's gonna submit a new set of plans, you'll do some subdivisions. Even if you don't in the process, Della, I will be happy to send you a letter and say, this has been submitted, if you'll come and take a look at it.
Sounds good, thank you, I appreciate that. Let me see, um, well, uh, soil, 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 will soil test be redone on this then? Because this is starting all over virtually?
Like the bearing capacity of the soil, that type of soil test, or?
The soil test that would have, that would prove yea or nay that, that ground is set to put fifteen to seventeen duplexes on it.
That level of density would not require him to make a soil test, whereas the commercial building code for a apartment building would, if my.
Okay, so it doesn't even need to do a soil test?
Not for a duplex like that, no.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that either, and I didn't.
That would be different between a commercial. Well, it's not commercial, it's still written in the book.
Yeah, I knew, I knew.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, that to kind of the extension of Farmington Lane, would that then come back to city council? That doesn't come back to city council?
Planning Commission recommended the acceptance of ten feet of street, so do you pass a piece of legislation for that, or do you acknowledge that?
We do not.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I, um, I think I have. Oh, I know, and I know it'll show up in the plans. Will we, um, do we know the square footage yet of what he's thinking? We don't know that yet.
Not yet. Uh, I did look at, um, some examples of what's been built along Holiday Way.
And that's.
Typically, it was a three-bedroom, full bath and a half, um, a living area open to a kitchen.
The papers said two bathroom, is that, it's different than a bath and a half, two bathrooms?
If I remember right, it was most of those are either a bath and a half or two full bathrooms, one of the two.
I was just curious, so, okay, okay. I, yeah, I think that's enough questions. Thank you, thank you. So other people can.
Rachel, I'm not forgetting you, but I'm gonna have Mr. Barnhill come up next because he wants to talk about Farmington Lane also, so. Then I'll, I haven't forgotten you, Rachel. But you're not talking about Farmington Lane.
First of all, I gotta talk about, about Farmington Lane. I'm just happy that maybe we've got a solution, pending some issues, small issues, we have, and, um.
But you say your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave Barnhill, sixteen twenty Courtney Drive, Washington Courthouse, Quail Run. And as you know, many of the homeowner, property owners were concerned about quality of life, change in the neighborhood, traffic, noise, all those issues, so hopefully, we can work something out agreeably that benefits both parties. And, uh, you know, I, I, from the beginning felt that this, this being zoned R3 back in nineteen ninety-nine was a huge mistake. It violates the basic principles of zoning in the city of Washington's ordinances. And, uh, created a really bad situation when developer came along and saw an opportunity and decided that maybe you'd like to do that, you know, develop that. And I'm glad we can come to a resolution on that. I'm still a little concerned about the fact that that was a spoiled site, and Doug Martin brought that up at the planning commission. And, uh, just about everything you can imagine has been dumped in that site. And usually, and it, and as far as I know, it was uncompressed. There was no packing, it was just dumped there. Dirt was shoved over it, and we've had twenty-five years of just rainfall and settling. But a lot of that stuff doesn't just go away. And just want to make sure that when this is built, that, um, that it is stable. And we're not gonna see tipping of slabs, issues with sanitary sewers, storm sewers, electric lines, if there is settling. My understanding is when the first core, uh, driller went up on the site, he, he fell into a sinkhole and had to be pulled out. So there may be issues with that substrate, and as you all know, at the city waste plant, what you had to go through to build a building there with that Bauer BG forty-five on the site for three or four months, drilling cores down to get to a stable foundation. So I think we should know something about, and I'm not an expert, I'm not pretending to be, to know what's down there, and how deep it is, and how loosely compacted it is. And what bearing that might have on developing that site. And I kind of feel that perhaps, it hasn't been developed to this point because of that. You know, uh, all kinds of things were, were dumped there over a period of a number of years. So anyway, and that's all I've got to say about Farmington Lane. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Denon, we had a problem with a cellphone tower, it may seem small, but he did track down the eventual owner, I got through two of them, and he found the third one and got a work order, and they came out. But what was happening was, after that storm we had that knocked power out, it was flashing high, high-density, high-power strobe lights into the backyards of all people who faced south. It was at forty-one and US thirty-five. And about two weeks later, it was corrected, it's been fine ever since. But it was just like flashbulbs going off, and we're a half mile away. I mean, it was bright. So anyway, that's taken care of. I'd also like to commend council on construction, a new trail in the city. Uh, that's fantastic that we get started. This is, you know, and I think an important issue. And I would suggest that we look at trails connected to city neighborhoods in the future, and also to establish a bike route east-west through city of Washington with, uh, marked bicycle routes. You know, with the bicycle stencils on the road, because people are coming through from Dayton and going back the other way to Xenia in Dayton, uh, to, to use the trail, and it will give them a route. And perhaps you could talk with the park district and the county engineer to, uh, facilitate that, that through the county out to Okta. We're also, Tri, I'm speaking with Tri-County Trail, a nonprofit. We're happy to hear that, uh, two more miles will be built, hopefully, next year to, uh, start building towards Courthouse. And we're still waiting on the grant application, I believe. I know that the twenty-three grants with the Clean Ohio Grant that the city applied for to connect Washington to Shaw Wetland, those weren't awarded, it's nearly a year before they announced the winners of those contracts, grants. In Tri-County Trails, we've been working, uh, this last month, we, uh, ground down roots on thirteen miles of trail and filled it, and so it's a nice smooth ride now. We had hundreds of root intrusions erupting in pavement, made boom, 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 down the trail. Uh, we, Tri-County Trail also contracted, uh, with help from a grant from Travel and Tourism to seal all the, the cracks in the trail from water damage from Shaw Wetland to the cross-country line. And, uh, we, we purchased, uh, we've got two UTVs and a professional Toro Probe Blower to help clean the trail, and we also appreciate the efforts of the county engineer in helping to keep the Burm's Mode and Wayne Township trustees. We're also help, helping with the Soil and Water District on improving things to do with the Shaw Wetland. They recently put a set of butterflies up, and, uh, we helped with the installation of a new, uh, information board out there. So things are moving along, we just want to keep them moving.
Good.
If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
The, where they smoothed out the trail from those root problems, that was a tremendous improvement. No, that makes that a much more pleasant little pedal down to, to Frankfurt.
We rented a skew, steer skid.
Skid steer.
Skid steer, I'm sorry. Just like, anyway, uh, with a trailer, with a grinder on the front. And we just ground those down, and then we used a cement-based material to fill those in to smooth it out.
Great. Wow. No, I, I did, I gotta tell you, I had an interesting experience. Trail's smooth and great, and I'm pedaling down to Frankfurt. And, you know, most of it's straight, so you can see quite a distance, and, and down the, the little route there. At first, I think that it's horses, but I'm like, they're awfully short and long. And you get up a little bit closer, and it's some cows. And I don't think hard about it. Uh, you know, I turned, uh, some music on, so I didn't start all them, I get up a little bit closer. And they're just half on the trail, half off, you know, just kind of hanging out. So I make a little bit of noise, and they start to wander off back into the, the field, and not a big deal. After the six cows walked away, on the other side of them was a bull. Who was not very happy that I was there, and I thought to myself, uh, by the time I turn around, uh, it ain't gonna work. So I just needed to stand here quietly and sit here, and hopefully he gets more interested in where the cows are going than me. And eventually, after about, oh, it was probably, oh, well more than five minutes, finally he wandered off on, went after his cows and left me alone then. But that was, for a while, I thought, well, at least this'll be an interesting family story about your weird uncle who got killed on a trail by a bull.
It's a good thing you wasn't riding a red bicycle.
You, could you tell me where the, from Courthouse, the projected area from Courthouse to Shaw Wetlands, where does that come off of?
That comes out of, uh, behind Washington Cemetery on Old Chillicothe Road.
Across the bridge?
Yeah, straight out, straight out to seven fifty-three. Short of seven fifty-three, goes south, across Kinskill, and down to, uh, the dog food plant uh, at the end of, uh, I forget what it's called, a little dead-end street that goes down. And then underneath seven fifty-three, so you eliminate totally the costing of seven fifty-three.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Is it Companion Way? We kept changing the name because the, the dog plant would change ownership.
Yeah, it was Mars Way.
Mars and something else. I think, I think we settled on Companion Way.
Yeah.
It was Dome's Drive.
We finally just settled on a generic pet name to deal with that.
Yeah. So hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll hear something on that.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Very much.
That's really great, you, we appreciate that. And Mr. Denon, your story was a bunch of bull. We have, we have one more young lady who would like to speak, and you haven't been here, so you just state your name and your address, and then tell us what you want to tell us.
Hi, I'm Rachel Johnson, and I live at eleven thirty-three Aventure in Washington Courthouse. I'm here to propose a food pantry box, and I have something I'd like to read, so. Take what you need, give what you can. This phrase gives a sense of humility and hope. In Ohio, forty point three percent of children are on snout benefits, yet only, yet, one in five children in America are subject to hunger every day. A harsh reality is millions of people are one whose paycheck were hardship away from hunger. No matter a person's income or how many benefits they are allotted each month, individuals and families still need assistance to get by. This would imply this, there is a gap that needs to be covered. Access to emergency source of food by implementing a food pantry box is what I'd like to propose. Together as a united community, we can make a change. In Fayette County, we are fortunate enough to have wonderful programs that serve the, the people and families in need. These programs greatly contribute to the needs of our community members. However, there are some requirements that cannot be met by those in need. Proof of address can be difficult to produce for some because of the lack of affordable and available housing in the area. It's likely people will lack transportation during the lack, during the hours of these food pantries. The intended purpose is to provide a safety net for everyone in the community. I personally have witnessed people on social media ask for help on local pages for Fayette County, as well as seeing many people that want to help. The food pantry would provide a chance for others to access help in a confidential manner for both parties, as well as, um, allow a reliable access point for food twenty-four-seven, that is judgment-free. If the food pantry box is approved, I plan to set a community page for Face, on Facebook called Little, Washington Courthouse Little Food Pantry. This page would give a location for the box, as well as giving the users an outlet to refer to. By providing this, its users could utilize it to communicate their needs. This would ensure that volunteers help with what they can. I have spoken with the program director, Chiquita Nash, Nash, at Second Chance Center of Hope about this need, and she has confirmed that they would love to provide a location for this food pantry box. It is my hope to get this started as soon as possible. The network this could potentially open will inspire others to be a part of its cause. We should never underestimate the influence of kindness and compassion. Holidays are, are approaching, and the season of giving is near. A simple gesture of stocking the food pantry box with a loaf of bread could be the very item that keeps individuals or families from hunger that night. I'd like to leave you with this Bible verse from Luke fourteen, thirteen, fourteen. It says, "But when you give a banquet, invite the poor, the crippled, the lame, and the blind. You will be blessed. Although they cannot repay you, you will be repaid at the resurrection of the righteous." Thank you.
Hey, Rachel, I have some questions for you.
Okay.
First of all, very nice presentation. Where would you have this, over by Second Chance?
Yes, Chiquita Nash said that they would like to provide the, um, location for the box.
And where do you get the box?
Okay, so that part, I'm still working out. Um, I kind of came up with this plan pretty quickly. Um, I'm, I'm a student of Southern State Community College. I'm majoring in human and social services. So this is just kind of my direction that I wanted to go towards, um, to help improve my community. So as far as getting the box, I'd like to maybe just implement a donation box, maybe at Second Chance or, um, at other centers. Maybe ask even churches if they'd like to help us provide this for our community.
Yeah, I've seen those, people put food into it, and then others, it's kind of like the little library things that people have.
Yeah, and it's definitely a community effort.
It has to be bigger than that, but yes.
Yeah.
I have a friend who, uh, he makes little free libraries.
Really?
I mean, it's the same idea.
Yeah, and, um, I, it could be possible, I could like to reach out to churches to ask if they would like to provide a, a location. That way there'd be more of an access, but I haven't got to that yet.
It would be wonderful to have like a centrally located, like easily walkable. I, I do like the idea of over by Second Chance, but it's, I feel like it's a little small, but, I mean.
Yeah, because there are several locations in Washington Courthouse where everyone could benefit from it.
Yeah.
Who would monitor that, to make sure the food gets to the right people, and somebody just not stealing it all one time?
Well, this would definitely run on our system. Um, as far as really monitoring it, I'm not quite sure. But, um, I'd like to just run on the idea of, um, respect it, and as the phrase that I began with, take what you need, give what you can. That's basically the strongest point of that. I don't know if we would be able to monitor it too well, and I don't know if that's really something we would need to do, just in, in the aspect of, if you're there, you're probably there for a reason, if that makes sense.
I guess if things are put in the box, how would people, they just reach in, take out what they want, or are you gonna put it on a shelf, or how's that gonna work?
It's actually, so the, how I have seen the food pantry boxes, is there's like a, there's like a, a lock, but not a key lock. Just like a latch, and if you, you know, are hungry, come to the food pantry box anytime, and, you know.
Doesn't Second Chance have food free?
Second Chance does have food.
Yes.
But, um, the objective of this is to provide food after hours. And as well as people, not everyone is able to meet their requirements. Now, second, there's certain programs in the community that serve everyone. But there's also programs that don't touch everyone's needs because of their income. And even people that have high income have a sense of food insecurity.
Yeah.
Joe, is there a mark? Is there any problem ordinance wise with doing something like that?
You'd wanna have like a door she mentioned that that latches, 'cause you're gonna put stuff like bread in there. You wanna see people and not raccoon.
Right.
Um. You might wanna talk with Lori Bowen at the Hands of Christ Ministry.
Okay.
You might find some help and assistance there.
I'd like to write that down, so I don't forget it.
There is no way, Jim, you can't, you know, monitor that. You just have to trust that, yeah, people will abuse it. No doubt, but others, I think will. Use it for the right purpose, but I have no question that people will abuse just about anything, so.
True.
Anyway, I think you've got a neat idea. You're looking to serve and I can't think of anything better than that.
Thank you.
We just recognized the lady who does a lot of that, so. Go for it. I hope it works.
Okay.
Y'all has a question.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on it, 'cause I think it's a great idea. I, um, how would that be like with expiration dates and how would that be um with like the health department? They need to be involved in anything like that? I'm just asking. I don't, no idea. It's a great idea.
Um, so the page that I plan on start, to start on Facebook, I feel like that would be a main source of communication. As far as if there's any problems that I could, or anyone even in the community could help with. I guess if there's something expired, don't take it.
Yeah.
But, but um I would hope that people would not put something that's expired in there. But also um maybe something like checking it every month to make sure that there's things that may not need to be in there anymore. Or that have stayed in there a little bit too long, maybe we could do something with that, about that, maybe check it month, monthly.
So it would be like any refrigerated items, it's basically dry goods.
Yes, absolutely. You wanna, you wanna do dry goods, but um also with the food pantry box, you're wanting to provide something that it's gonna be readily available to eat. So it's gonna be more like maybe canned meats or a cereal, maybe um dry milk, that they could add water to. You can provide water, drink packets, stuff like that.
You see, probably oughta check with the health department, but typically if they're not charging for it, they're gonna be okay with it. Now, we do have two retired members of the health department here that might have an idea of it.
That's what I was gonna say. Yeah, uh, rules have changed since I retired many years ago, but you know what? On canned goods and a lot of dry goods, it'll say best if used by a certain date. It doesn't say it's expired.
Right.
And it may be good for twenty years.
Right.
But it's not a health issue. So as long as you keep things out of there that says you have to use by a certain date for health reasons, that's pretty worn out, avoid.
Something I just thought of, maybe even checking seals one of the times, to make sure it's managed correctly.
My guess is things won't stay in there very long.
Cause it's definitely in need, you're right.
That's the hope, yes.
Rachel, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you for your, it's my first time being here, so appreciate you being so inviting.
Seriously, if you get him some, come back and tell us, come back and tell us about it.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We're ready for legislation. Are you ready? We've got legislation previously introduced, and the first is amended ordinance number thirty-four twenty twenty-four, and it's third reading.
I'll move that we place amended ordinance number thirty-four twenty twenty-four on third reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Amendment ordinance number thirty-four dash two thousand and twenty-four and ordinance amending codified ordinance one fifty-six point one one three, section E, political signs and or posters.
Those are passage.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Next is ordinance number thirty-five twenty twenty-four, second reading.
I'll move it ordinance thirty-five twenty twenty-four on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-five dash two thousand and twenty-four and ordinance rezoning seven twenty-six Rawling Street, parcel two one one dash zero zero eight dash one dash zero zero dash zero nine three dash zero zero, two point one nine acres from CF Community Facilities District to R two, two-family residential district.
Next is resolution number R thirty-one twenty twenty-four, second read.
I move we place resolution number R thirty-one dash twenty twenty-four on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-one dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager and or city service director to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public, Public Works Commission, state capital improvement and or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required to Clinton and Market Street improvements phase two.
I'll boo for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Next is resolution number R thirty-two, second reading.
I move that we place resolution number R thirty-two twenty twenty-four on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-two dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution confirming Mr. Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mr. Lance Heath to the District Fifteen Public Works Integrating Committee for a term concluding September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
For adoption.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Resolution number R thirty-three twenty twenty-four, second reading.
I'll move we put resolution R thirty-three twenty twenty-four on second reading.
On second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-three dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager, to enter into an agreement amending and restating the city's membership with Central Ohio Healthcare Consortium, consortium, sorry, for healthcare insurance.
Put it for adoption.
Oh.
Yes, okay.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. New legislation in writing, resolution number R thirty-four twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R thirty-four twenty twenty-four on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
I don't know this person, so can somebody? Dana Goolsbee, she's employed by the municipal court of the City of Washington Courthouse, has his tailor. Uh, Dana was uh brought over by the new judge and she's been an exceptionally dedicated employee.
Anything else? Roll call, Kelly.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-four dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Dana Goolsbee to the Fayette Metropolitan Housing Authority to fulfill an unexpired term concluding on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Next is resolution number R thirty-five twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I move we place resolution number R thirty-five twenty twenty-four on first reading.
Second. And same thing with her, for Taylor Wilson. Taylor Wilson works for the probation department. She has for several years. She has been a very dedicated employee. Uh, the Metropolitan Housing Authority is not something that we have people knocking down the doors to uh achieve what to join. Uh, Taylor had a minor mishap with a city vehicle and put a bee in it. So that's what brought me to Taylor, Taylor to my attention, so we had a nice little conversation and uh she happily volunteered.
She was happy to remember. She was happy to ask.
It's like a male threat.
Thank you for that information. I think she was voluntold, but. Anyway, uh, any other discussion? Roll call, Kelly.
Oh goodness, Johnson?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-five two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Taylor Wilson to the Fayette Metropolitan Housing Authority to to fulfill an unexpired term concluding on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Mr. Denon, I just realized, you cannot have any more legislation. We have thirty-five ordinances and thirty-five resolutions for the year. That's a nice number.
And the year isn't over yet.
Uh, okay, I know that's not gonna work, so anyway.
It's a good try.
Yeah. Uh, miscellaneous, Mr. Johnson, what do you got this evening, sir?
I was in Xenia practicing in front of Judge Lewis over in the juvenile court. And she was, she started talking to me about how beautiful the bike paths in Washington Courthouse are. So, uh, they've got a very good reputation all the way in Xenia. She says she loves coming and and enjoying those. And I said, well, that's so interesting, 'cause I hear about the bike trails all the time. And I know that the people in Washington Courthouse are fanatical about biking more than probably any other community I know of. So that's, uh, I I think it's a positive reflection on our community, so that's great.
Xenia used to call themselves the bicycle cabinet, so I don't know. Mr. Blair, oh, I'm sorry, are you done, Mr. Johnson?
I said, now they're coming here.
Oh, there you go, there you go. Mr. Blair, what do you got?
I would like to give kudos to the city employees that were working at Iman Park last week. They discovered a cell phone that was lost by a particular councilman walking his dog. And uh, talk about consternation, you know. But uh, I made it known to the gentleman working and before we got finished with the walk, uh, they had found it. And not where we'd even walked, so I think somebody had picked it up and.
Threw it down.
Yeah, so I I appreciate the diligence of the city service department. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Saved you, yes, that's very good.
That's very good.
Yeah.
Mr. Schultz?
Well, you know, um, I get to thinking about this the other day. This city council and the commissioners and the future commissioners probably are in charge of one of the biggest booms in this county and city since after the Second World War, when you get to thinking about it. And we've accomplished a lot in the last four years, and there'll be more coming over the next four years. So it is, it's kinda interesting when you think about the last big housing boom was in the forties after the Second World War. There was a lot of houses built around the city, and we're doing the same thing again. Uh, so it's kinda interesting how things progress and things change over the years. But we, the commissioners are in charge of all that booming that's going on and more yet to come and more decisions to be made in the future. And then I got one other thing. This might interest you, Sylvia, and Ted, this may interest you. What do you call a bunch of bunnies walking backwards? A receding hairline? That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
You didn't give me time to answer.
I don't think that's one bit funny.
I'll second that.
Sylvia, you always get stuck right behind Schultz's joke or whatever.
That was a pretty good one though. I wouldn't have got it. Ted thinks he would have got it.
What do you have tonight, Mrs. Call?
I am eternally grateful that Little Caesar's finally, cleanly, blessedly reopened and that my children have enjoyed many, many hot and ready five dollar pizzas. And thank you, thank you again, Gail, for letting my son come down and meet them. I, it was just a super cool experience that you facilitated to get my kiddo to meet the manager and it was just cool, so. So thank you and I'm excited that that he's excited, so that's all I've got.
Okay, Mr. Hawk?
Well, I, I think it was good that we recognized Janet tonight and that proclamation. She's, she's done a lot of stuff over those ninety-two years. She, she is opinionated. I don't know if you, if you did it whereas on that, but anyway.
You don't have to guess, Ted, that's true.
The where as.
Yeah, but uh, I think that was well deserved and she's really uh got some descendants that are following in the same path.
They are.
Someday they'll, they'll probably get that recognition too, so that's all.
Mr. Chrisman?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for coming and the comments and the statements or whatever they were. I get them mixed up, but anyway, thanks for coming and I like your plan. And uh, guess that's about all I think of. I'm old, I got a short memory. Thank you.
Okay, we just passed legislation about signs. I think, did we pass it? Yeah. Anyway, having said that, I would very much appreciate it. Within three days after November fifth, everybody takes down the dag on signs. I don't care who wins, get rid of the signs. I am so sick of signs. So it's not the law, it's just the chairman of city council asking, get rid of political signs, please.
Dale, would you mind adding all those TV ads where there's laminations?
And the same thing there, yes. You can't even watch.
Doesn't bother me more than the signs.
You can't even watch a football game without being unindated with dumb stuff.
They were adding me to interrupt you.
No, that's fine. I told Mr. Denon that uh, as I've studied history, there were several times in history where we've had what's been called great compromises. One to get the Declaration of Independence approved, one to get the Constitution approved. And now we can add Farmington Lane. As a person who lives on Farmington Lane and a person who knows how much effort the city manager put into that. It wasn't done overnight, it was done with hours of discussions. And I think as it turns out, both groups benefited. Mr. Denon was never in favor of one group or the other. So he went out and did an incredible job of getting that as good as it could get. Now, is it perfect? No, but as good as it could get. And so, Mr. Denon, I'm recommending that we send you to the Middle East and Ukraine.
Sure.
In no time, you could have those.
It'd probably be a little bit easier.
It might have been a little easier, that's. It might have been a little easier, that's true. Uh, having said that, we need to go to executive session, council members, to discuss personnel issues. You have been doing evaluations of the three people we evaluated, and we need to discuss those. Uh, so if somebody wants to make a motion to go into executive session, I would appreciate it.
I'll move we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel issues.
I'll second.
Uh, whoever. We'll let the lady do it. Uh, Caleb and Sylvia, uh, and Ms. Kelly, would you give us a roll call?
Yes, sir. Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call? Yes. Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are in executive session at, I think, eight thirty-nine. We'll call it eight thirty-nine.